You ready? All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 3rd. I'll go ahead and call for a roll call, please.
Chairman Christopher Sippel.
Present.
Vice Chairman Brian Anderson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Seth Banda. Okay.
He's here. There he is.
Alternate Commissioner Daniel Cipuentes.
Here.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and call for an approval of the agenda.
Motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Communication from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on this agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anyone here from the community that would like to speak regarding items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered consent items and will be approved by a single motion unless requested by the commission for further discussion. Items on consent for this evening are DR 17-1126, DR 17-1070, GP 17-1010 with a companion case Z 17-1018, DR 17-1102, and DR 17-1103, and DR 17-1175, and then finally, S 17-1006 is going to be continued to February 7th. So... Is there anyone that... I think we have to do two motions, because we've got one. So I'll put it over to the Vice Chair.
I'll do the first motion. Motion's item number 70, DR 17-1126 with addendum for approval.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair for DR 17-1126, including the addendum. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ailer. All in...
I just wanted to mention before we vote that this is the one I have a conflict with.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Froelich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that's going to be six... Yep, six with one abstention. Vice Chair, I'll call for the second motion, please.
Second motion is item 8, DR 17-1070. Item 9, GP 17-1010. Item 10, DR 17-102. Item 11, DR 17-1103. Item 12, DR 17-1175 with addendum for approval.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Froelich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And then item number 13 is going to be continued again to the February 7th, 2018. Do we need a motion for that one? Okay. One more, Vice Chair.
Motion to continue item 13, S 17-1006.
To the February 7th meeting. There's been a motion by Vice Chair for a continuance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Are we good? Okay. Public hearing non-consent. Non-consent hearing items will be heard at individual public hearings and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearing, anyone wishing to comment in support or opposition may do so by completing out one of these yellow cards that you can find in the back. We have three items on our non-consent this evening. So we will start with GP 17-1012, Greenfield Ranch, and the companion case Z 17-1020, Greenfield Ranch. Amy, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. Today, we are talking about... Oops, wrong thing. About Greenfield Ranch. And Greenfield Ranch is located... I'm going to go to the next map. Queen Creek Road and Greenfield Road at the southeast corner, excuse me. You can see the site here on the screen. It is under agricultural use at the moment. It is vacant. It is surrounded by large lot development. Broadland Ranch predominantly is the surrounding subdivision. And to the west is the South Area Service Center for the Town of Gilbert. And then to the west, and then to the south, and southwest are large lots and vacant land. So several years ago, this property was rezoned and general planned. The general plan was community commercial and neighborhood office. Neighborhood office was the buffer between the large residential and the commercial zone, or the commercial general plan. The applicant has asked to go to residential greater than 1 to 2 D use per acre at a density of 1.88 dwelling units per acre. In rezoning, they're asking to go from community commercial and neighborhood office to 7.11 acres of single-family 15, and I'm going to go to that map. So you can see the single-family 15 is your regular shape. That is on the north and the east of the site. And single-family 10, which is 26.35 acres for the remainder of the site. I will point out, going back to here, there are large 69 KV power lines that are along Queen Creek Road, and then some overhead lines that go up Greenfield Road. There is a multi-use trail that runs along here, some retention basins, and a sidewalk that were done with the roadway improvements, as well as over here along Greenfield Road. This is a PAD. The applicant has asked it... Asked it. Great. Asked for several modifications. Actually, only one modification, and then has made a concession for single-story homes on the site. So there will be only single-story throughout the site. And then for SF 10, they have requested that the minimum lot width, instead of 85 feet, would be 80 feet. So that is the sum total of the requested development standard modifications. The lots, just in case you're curious, I did look at the pre-plat. The lots that are for the SF 15 are ranging in size from 17,400 to 22,000. And then for these two over here on the far east, those are 16,700 and 17,800. So they are oversized SF 15 lots. Internally, we're looking at lot sizes, just for informational purposes, of 11,100 square feet and up. So they're a little bit oversized SF 10 lots. You all noticed that there was an addendum where we just added some information that engineering requested regarding reimbursements, and that's condition 1 and condition 2, and then condition 6. The language said easement, and engineering asked that we change the wording to tract. So that's what the addendum was for this. With that being said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. I do have the overall open space plan, just for reference purposes, and I do have the lot sizes off of the plat, in case we need to reference any of that information. And with that being said, do you have any questions that I can answer this evening?
Thank you, Amy. Any initial questions for Amy? Commissioner Cavaney.
Thanks, Amy. Hey, I notice on the one reduction of lot width to 80 feet, how many lots are affected by that?
In my understanding, that would be all the SF 10s.
All SF 10s go to 80? Okay. And what percentage? It's 80% of the property, right? It's the lower... Below the odd-shaped piece, those are the ones that are the...
Correct. We're looking at 26 acres of SF 10 and 7 acres of SF 15.
Got it. Okay.
And it is a gated community. I will mention that.
I saw that. Okay. Perfect.
And in case you're wondering where the emergency access is, it is designed to be down here, and the trees have been shifted to get out of the way.
How does that work? Is it... Does it connect directly to... Is it Queen Creek there?
Yes, there's a curb cut out on Queen Creek, so there'll be access for the fire truck.
But pave creed or something across the soft scape, or...
They can do compacted DG, all-weather road.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this time for Amy? Okay. This is a public hearing. I have briefly chatted with the applicant they have asked to go after, so are you still good with that, Mr. Froelich? Okay. So we've got a few here that wish to speak, so I'll ask you to come up. I've received three cards during... For this item. So at this point, I'll ask you guys to come up. It looks like there are three. One from a Nancy, and I'm going to try this. I think I'm going to get it. Jan Francisco? Close enough? Okay. She has opposed the item and does not wish to speak. And then I saw a Brian Allison, who is also opposed to the item and does not wish to speak. And then an M, Jan Francisco, who has opposed the item and would like to speak. So I'd ask you to come on up, right there where Amy is at. If you could just give us your name and town of residence. And how'd I do on that last name?
Yes. My name's Mike Jan Francisco. I live in Broadland Ranches.
Okay.
And I'd like to preface this meeting by letting people know, there's a little more history to this property. I've been there for 20 years. And ever since the original developer reneged on this, Broadland Ranch is too. This commission approved this general plan to allow the change to this great commercial building, as you're aware of, professional offices that failed miserably. And there was only one person in that time who approved it. It was the present mayor, who had enough insight to understand, does not fit in this community. The general plan for this area, based on the Gilbert guidelines, was for SF 35, low-density housing. This is total violation of that plan. 80% of this plan is SF 10, high-density housing. Does not belong in this community. It doesn't take a rocket science to figure out that we're tired of developers who profit at the residents' expense. They don't live here. We live here. They're willing to change the whole ambiance, lifestyle, the quality of life, which we, Broadland Ranch residents, spent millions of dollars, custom homes and tourist properties surrounding that area. And it was really kind, this project, to put a nine-foot wall up so we can have, it looks like a prison camp. So I'm definitely requesting this commission to use their discretion. On this format is not acceptable, especially with the safety issues of one entrance, one exit, for the egress of that property onto a very highly-traffic area, ever since that development now had been pushed back all the way to Chandler Heights, as far as it could. And all that traffic now has become overwhelmed. Being retired, I do not even venture to go out between 9 and 2. It is dangerous. I can just see an accident waiting to happen with that property. So I just have so many concerns with this particular plan for that property. It definitely affects our quality of life and the lifestyle that we've invested millions of dollars. I've been there for 20 years in that property, and I only support, I ever got, was from Mayor Daniels, the only one that had the insight to know that these projects are not acceptable. So I'm asking this commission to please use your common sense to know, in this format, this is not... Does not fit in this community. And definitely adversely affects our quality of life and the safety of this... Of our particular community. So I appreciate your thoughts and your consideration on our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening. At this point, I ask the applicant to come up and respond to any of the points made. A name and town of business.
Okay. Trying to remember which button I push.
There's a little yellow one that says podium mute. You just hit that one.
Oh, there we go. Outstanding. Shawn Lake, 1744 Southville Vista Drive, here on behalf of Taylor Morrison Homes. We appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening. I'm really excited about this project. This is a great piece of property located at the northeast corner of Queen Creek and Greenfield Roads. We've been involved with this project for many months, working with the Town of Gilbert planning staff, and also holding neighborhood meetings and talking with the residents about it. We held a neighborhood meeting and an open house, and had quite a few people attend and express their support for this project. What we are proposing to do is to change the general plan and zoning for the property from an office and a commercial shopping center designation to back to a single-family designation at a density of about 1.8 units per acre. And in working with the neighbors and the staff going into this, we designed this project, as you can see, with larger lots along the perimeter, and then pushed the... I say smaller, the 10 and 12... 11 and 12,000 square foot lots on the inside of the project, to create that transitional buffer, so that you have similar lot sizes. But we also agreed to limit all of the homes within the subdivision to single-story, so that you further minimize any... I don't know that you could say incompatible between single-family to single-family, but you wouldn't have height or people overlooking people's backyards. These are large lots to begin with. The project has been designed with a gated... As a gated community. These are going to be high-end homes, somewhere from 30, 3200 square feet up to 4,500 square foot homes in a gated community. So if you take that and you multiply it by a per-square-foot cost of what homes are selling for, these are going to be very high-end, nice homes, executive housing, where this is certainly not incompatible with the area. It's going to be very nice, attractive subdivision. We've also worked with the planning staff along the perimeter to incorporate trails and landscaping and open space, so it's set back and fits into the community, not only along the perimeter on the north and the east, but also along Queen Creek and Greenfield Roads. A substantial amount of the project is in open space with common area amenities. As you can see, it will come in right into a big, large, open-space park, and that park will be owned and maintained and paid for by the residents of this community, as well as all of the landscaping along the perimeter of the development. As you drive up and down, Greenfield and Queen Creek Roads will be maintained by the HOA. Amy touched on the setbacks. The only deviation, even though we exceed most of the standard requirements, the only deviation is for those internal lots, for an 80-foot-wide lot, and that's because we have a specific 60-foot-wide product to go on that specific lot that we're requesting. We believe this is a really nice, attractive, high-end project, one that the Town of Gilbert is looking to have to provide that type of inventory for executive-type housing. We think this is going to be a great project and would look forward to your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. One quick question. What's the rear setback on those lots on the north? The rear yard?
30 feet.
30 feet. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ailer?
As... Do you know the number of... If it was SF 35, which is the lowest zoning nearby, do you know approximately how many lots that would be? Did you look at that portion?
I haven't done a rough calculation. I've done an SF 35 recently that was in a density of about 1.25.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cavaney?
So you mentioned, and I see in our packet, the history of this. So back in 99, it actually was zone residential. Was it SF 35? Are you familiar?
Back in those days, I believe it might have been SF, or whatever the zoning category was.
Yeah, whatever it was called then. Yeah, half acre, basically, lot. And then it looks like it changed to another...
And then in '12, it went to office and retail commercial.
But there was a time in '07, I guess, where it also was country park estates. So it looks like, anyway, it has had a history of being a residential piece, and then has had a stint here as of about the last eight years. Eight years has been zoned for some kind of commercial use. Okay. Okay. And then with the single entry, what are the thoughts on that versus trying to create a second entry out, a permanent entry, not just an emergency entry? What are some of the thoughts on that from an access perspective?
We actually looked at that, and we tried to create a much more grander, divided entry. If you'll notice, the entry along Greenfield Road here, it's just not your standard entrance into a normal subdivision. It's a really large, grand entrance design as you come in here with a divided entry. So from an emergency standpoint, the fire department likes those divided entries with a meeting in the middle, because if there's a crash on one side, you can always get through, and it doesn't block the area. But because of that, we also wanted to have a redundant access point out on the Queen Creek. We didn't think, for this number of homes, you're only talking 60 homes, that we needed to have a second major grand entrance point. We thought this was more than sufficient, and the planning staff and the town transportation staff concurred with that as well.
And... Okay, thank you. And then on your southwest corner of the parcel here, or of the property, you know, often developers will put their retention in that intersection corner, right? Landscape it up a bit to shield the homes. How are you... I mean, you've pushed some homes pretty close to the corner there. How are you shielding those? How are you providing, you know, a buffer of walls, landscaping, whatever, to mitigate any sound or other concerns?
But you... Chairman, Commission Member Cavaney, what we've done is, as you can see, we've pushed... A lot of times, you'll see people push just the corner back, and then will pull homes up against the arterial. What we tried to do is push not only along Greenfield Road, but also along Queen Creek Road, the whole subdivision back, to create that big landscaping area. It's a much more attractive view as you go along this community, along Queen Creek and along Greenfield. We have walls along the backs of these homes, but we also have multiple layers of trees, as you can see from this plan. Multiple layers of trees along Queen Creek and along Greenfield Road to buffer that would be outside of that wall.
What is that... What is the distance of your buffer there? Is it 20, 30 feet, 40 feet? What does it look like?
I would say there's from back of curb to the back of wall, I'm guessing 40, 50 feet.
Okay. All right. Well, I definitely commend you on the creativity of your layout, and to kind of go against the grain and move your landscape width and grandeur to the entrance versus the corner. I think there's some real creativity in that. It's going to make for quite a beautiful entry, I think. And you could have slammed in linear homes in here, and it would have... It would have made it price super efficient, but quite typical, and yet you've made it appropriate. And honestly, I've owned a home of a lot size of 85 by 110-ish, and that's a good-sized lot. It's a fair amount to care for, and you can still make it quite attractive. So those aren't necessarily small lots, even though in comparison to the perimeter lots, and of course, the adjacent to the east and north, a little smaller. But those are still healthy-sized lots, so yeah.
Yeah. With these lots, the smallest lots have the depth of 135 feet.
Yeah.
And the larger lots have almost 150-foot deep. And so, I mean, these are big lots. They'll have big backyards. And to get the kind of price per square foot for the high-end type homes we're looking to get here, that's why you have this really creative layout within this community.
No, I think it's actually quite attractive for what you've worked in here, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments for the applicant? Okay, thank you. I'll ask staff to come back up. Is there any other questions or comments for Amy? Commissioner Froelich?
I just had a question about the multi-use path. There's an existing one there, and it looks like that's going to stay based on this plan, and then maybe they're adding another one internal to the site along Greenfield. Is that correct?
I believe they're continuing the multi-use path around, and the sidewalks already exist. And then we also asked that from...
Amy, can you pop it back up on the screen?
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
It takes a second, so... There we go. Sorry about that. We also asked that from these cul-de-sacs, they not only connect to the multi-use path, but they continue out and connect to the sidewalk trail, too, so that you aren't just saying you can only use this path, but you can go on out. So they are continuing that throughout, per staff's request.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff?
I should mention, Mr. Chair, I was incorrect in not mentioning that. I did receive four phone calls in the last few days. One resident is here, and they are not in favor. Two were in favor, and one was just a curiosity call.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dais for discussion. Anyone like to start? Commissioner Ailer?
Well, overall, design-wise, I applaud the applicant for bringing in a design that doesn't bring the lots, what we normally see, straight up into the street. There is some undulation into the landscape. So when you're coming down Queen Creek, that you have a little bit of depth. We see a lot in our town and other towns, more than ours, is that you see this huge, just eight-foot wall or six-foot wall right on the line, and you don't see it kind of bend back into the site as this one does. So I like that, how it does that on both sides, and that the street is used as a buffer to some of the house, once you get into the property itself. And then kind of looking, doing just some quick math, that if we were looking at 1.25 dwelling units per acre, as the applicant said, that he was looking at R 35 as a typical one, that'd be about 42 units. So we're only talking about 20 lot difference. And I know that sounds like a big number, but really, in the large lots that we have, this one, I think, kind of blends in, even though they're smaller lots, to what's neighboring. And I'm normally in favor of trying to be a little bit closer to the R 43 and R 35 lots, but I think this time the applicant has done a pretty good job, so I'd be in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Cavaney? Commissioner Cavaney?
So, my thoughts are, first of all, every time we, every time we see commercial change to residential, we have to step back and take a second look, make sure we're doing the right thing, right, especially on a corner like this. But I think, given its history of residential, which it has predominantly been, I certainly can see how someone would have wanted to, at one point, try commercial here, but it obviously didn't fly, and we have an opportunity here to do, I think, a development that complements the adjacent. They are certainly smaller lots than adjacent, but I think it's a nice transition into the corner, still staying with reasonably large-sized lots. And I do appreciate the creativity in layout, the extra buffer. I think this is going to be, and the grandeur of that entrance. I think that's going to be quite an attractive entrance. So, for all those reasons, I am supportive of this. I think it's a great opportunity to utilize this corner in a very attractive and well-designed way.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and call for a motion. We have to make two separate motions, correct? Vice Chair?
I'll recommend approval to Town Council, GP 17-1012. Is the addendum for both cases with addendum?
I think it's just the zoning.
Just the zoning, okay. So, recommend to Town Council approval of GP 17-1012.
Second? Motion's been made by Vice Chair, second by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll go ahead and call for the second motion on the zoning with the addendum.
Recommend approval of Z-17, recommend approval to Town Council, Z-17-1020 with addendum.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, my understanding on this one is, this was a recommendation to Town Council, and so, Town Council will have final say, and Mayor Daniels will be leading that charge. So, I would encourage you to chat with her and use your next step up. So, thank you for coming this evening. With that, we'll move to item number 15, which is Z-17-1007. Amy has this one as well, and she's going to be brief and on point.
Mr. Chairman, you know how fast and how brief it can be from the moment. All righty. We are looking at batch G, LDC update. We did come forward with all of these different, if you'll recognize this PowerPoint from the very first way back in July, where we talked about these items that we were going to move forward, discussing. We did eliminate one of them, which was the parking table. We just kind of ran out of time on that, and we were trying to move forward, because the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Overlay District was a little bit time-sensitive, and we were trying to move things through quickly. So, as far as the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, it is consistent with what was discussed at study session. We will be including the maps in the GIS map for zoning, and we will be adding the new boundary lines in, as well as the overflight boundary and the hazards for aviation. So, we saw both of those when we were at study session. We did add noise-sensitive uses, and you saw them in the table that is in your packet. We added the new disclosure statements, the navigable airspace, and the hazardous materials and facilities that could be within certain areas, and those are keyed in the table and noted below. And so, those are all in your packet and consistent with what was discussed. So, all of Section 3.2 is being revised. So, that is why that whole section was provided to you, because it was a lot to try to just line item strike. So much of it changed, and we added so many new components to it, that it was just important to just clean up the whole section. Residential side clear. You'll recall, this is not a setback. This is a side-clear yard that is in Section 2.104, and it discusses having it, the side yards free and clear for five foot along the side of the building, for five foot extending past the back of the building, for utilities and other permanent structures, not just a house. The house is defined and determined by a building setback, separate thing. After discussion that evening at study session, and further discussions with Gilbert Fire, Public Works, and Development Services, meaning buildings specifically, it was determined, with some of the comments made, that maybe zero was appropriate. We do not see this in any other municipalities in the greater Phoenix area. The clear, and whether something needs to be fire-rated or if something needs to be accessible, is determined by building code and fire code, and the fire department did not seem to have any outstanding issues. I asked that the fire marshal run it up the chain of command, and he did take it to his chiefs and discuss this item, and they didn't see any hardship in getting around air conditioners or pool equipment or other such things. So, staff is moving forward with the recommendation of removing the side-clear area, which was delete Section 2.104D4, and Section 4.1C would be deleted, and the Figure 1 in Appendix 1 would be deleted. Okay? If you have any comments about any of these, please feel free to stop me at any time. I got the maps out of order. Oopsie. Those are the maps that are being added to the GIS. Subdivision, minor land division and minor subdivisions. If you'll recall, on this one, lot ties were being added, and then, the minor subdivision wanted to refer to four or fewer lots. It used to be 10. With that being said, a change had to be made to subdivision, which was also noticed and advertised, just with everything, to five or more lots, because you couldn't have one at four and the other at four. You had to have a break. So, four or fewer is a minor, five or more is a regular subdivision. So, I listed all the different articles and chapters that were being amended, and those are line-item strikes. They're very simple. Moving on to the amendment for, to allow the flexibility and the reduction of building setback in landscape areas internal to overall commercial sites. So, we're talking about master site plans, commercial subdivisions, and PAD development plans. Basically, what staff has moved forward with is saying that building setbacks in landscape areas internal to an approved master site plan, commercial subdivision, or development plan may be reduced or eliminated, provided that pedestrian paths, vehicular connectivity, and shared parking is clearly depicted and duly recorded, and the project meets the Town and Gilbert Commercial Design Guidelines. So, we're saying for all three of those, staff has the ability to reduce or eliminate based on the amount of creative design and cooperation that are happening between parcels within an overall site plan. Employment landscape areas. We often refer to this as the LI rear yard. If you'll recall, we had quite a long discussion about all the different options that are out there. So, if you have a yard for either a light industrial or a general industrial, but we're saying all employment uses, so that did include BP in this. But in BP, sometimes they're built like offices, sometimes they're built like industrial subdivisions. It just depends. But if there's a rear yard, and it is fully fenced and enclosed, and you can't see into it, then you can eliminate your landscape requirement, that's the shrubs, trees, and ground cover, on your perimeter, as long as you're not adjacent to residential uses as determined by the general plan. So, we're not talking about houses that exist there that are still there and they're grandfathered. We're not talking about it's zoned housing, but the general plan doesn't say it. We're talking about, what does the general plan say? If it says residential, then you still have to provide trees in that five-foot area. You would not be required to provide shrubs or ground cover, because they would not be visible. As far as the trees, they need to be non-desiduous, meaning permanent screening all year round. We did not take that and apply it to street side, because it was determined that we already have street standards that do require shrubs and ground cover and trees. So, that is taken care of. So, it would only be as adjacent to residential that that would be required. Otherwise, no more landscape requirement in rear fenced yards, gated fenced yards.
Quick question. Is that just on, what zoning is that on?
It's unemployment. So, that'd be BP, LI, and GI.
Okay.
So, business park, light industrial, and general industrial.
And so, business park, I would, I know we have a few, it's only if they actually enclose it, because some business parks wouldn't be enclosing it.
Only if it's enclosed and gated, yes.
Okay. Six-foot wall, I'm assuming?
Yeah, and a solid gate, no picket. All right. Use permit expiration date. Really simple. It's a line-item strike. We're going from two years to three years, to be consistent with the design review modification we made several years ago, because use permits generally go hand-in-hand with the design review activity of a process. So, that's just for consistency's sake, and we've had a few applicants over the years have a little bit of inconsistency with those two dates getting off of a match. So, simple as that. We recommend approval to Town Council with the addendum to the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport chapter. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Amy at this time? All right, the town is the applicant, so they did a good job on their presentation. If there's anyone here that would like to speak regarding item number 15Z-17-1007, you can come up here at this time with a yellow form. Seeing none? Yes?
Mr. Bianchi.
I do see Mr. Bianchi, two times.
Get another presentation.
Yeah, we would like Mr. Bianchi to do a 13-minute on bird strikes. Yeah, bird strikes. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back for the applicant. Amy, anything additional for us? Okay. Any comments or questions? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dais for a motion.
Chairman?
Commissioner Bloomfield?
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend the approval to the Town Council for Z-17-1007.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Bloomfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ayler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. No better way than to end the meeting this way. We're going to move on to item number 16, which is Z-16-07, wire, wireless communication facility, and the guest speaker this evening, welcome Nicole back. It's good to see you.
Chairman, good to see you and commissioners. Nicole McCarty with the transportation planning, but I just can't quite leave the, you know, land use wireless side yet. So, I'm here tonight to wrap up a project that I've been working on since May of 2016. I can't believe it, but that's the last, when we initiated with Planning Commission, this project for the land development code amendments. In the midst of all of that, legislation was passed in March, which really impacted kind of the direction we were going with the small-cell wireless and just our wireless section in general. On November 2nd, our Town Council did approve the project for allowing wireless facilities in our right-of-way. That is kind of separate than the project tonight. This project tonight is, they are related, but these, the LDC amendments relate to private property. That project was for the public right-of-way only. And then, again, tonight, we're asking for the recommendation for those LDC amendments, and then our next step will go to council on February 1st, and hopefully wrap both the public and private side of this wireless project up. So, the project purpose is really to be consistent with the process and the review and approvals of, that are going on with the legislation, which is governing what happens in the public right-of-way. It's also to ensure that our codes are up to date, to allow for new technologies in the town, and we need that to keep up with increasing demands and to prep for 5G networks, which is what the wireless providers are promising us that are coming. The amendments affect both Chapter 1 and Chapter 2 of our LDC, Article 4.7, which is the wireless section, Article 5.6, design review, and the glossary, and then, we're adding a new design standards for wireless facilities in Chapter 2. So, a quick summary of those. In the Article 4.7, it's really, we did an overall cleanup and clarification of the code. For example, there were sections on measuring setbacks that, as the planning staff kind of always struggled with, and so, we really just made it easier to interpret and more specific, so our residents can also interpret it easier. We also combined several tables into one, so we grouped WCF types by categories, instead of trying to list out every single WCF type. So, that made it a little bit streamlined. And then, we added some new sections related to minor modifications and abandonment, severalability, and some other sections that just kind of were missing from that section. Wireless in residential areas is kind of a hot topic, and so, I just wanted to point out that no code changes were proposed. Wireless is prohibited in single-family and multifamily, with the exception of land that's owned by the state or public school, or an electric utility company, or a place of worship. So, those exemptions are still the same. The House Bill does allow small wireless facilities in the right-of-way, no matter what zoning. So, we will see wireless in the right-of-way in residential areas, but only if there's a small wireless facilities. Now, the legislation does allow macro, what we call macro sites, the larger facilities, in the right-of-way as well, but it doesn't take them out of zoning. So, thankfully, here in Gilbert, we do zone into our right-of-way, which means that anywhere where residential zoning goes to the center line, that will prohibit macro sites from going there. So, again, we'll see small ones, but we won't see the large 40-foot, 50-foot, 8-foot antennas in our residential area. In design review, the summary of changes there is that we made Category 1 facilities eligible for administrative design review, and none of our wireless had ever gone through administrative design review before. They'd always been administrative use permits or conditional use permits. So, this, again, reduces the cost and the time that the wireless providers have to go through for small cells, micro cells, existing vertical elements, and stealth-building elements. So, again, Category 1 facilities are really the smallest, least impactful to our community. Category 2s will still go through administrative use permits, and Category 3s will still come to the board as conditional use permits. So, as they get larger and more impactful, they will have a lengthier process. The glossary of general terms, we really just added some new definitions that stem from the legislation, and then, we modified existing terms just to be more in line with industry standards. The design standards were developed, I sat on a subcommittee that with representatives from all the Valley Cities and Tucson and Flagstaff, and we really kind of brainstormed what we wanted to see in wireless, and very detailed things, like how far the antenna can be from the back of the pole, and what color they're painted, and things I didn't even know existed, like shrouds, and all kinds of details about how to make these kind of look as streamlined as possible, since they are going to be very proliferative in our community. So, we worked together to make sure that we, all the Valley Cities have consistent standards. We also went through a stakeholder review process with the wireless providers to ensure that our standards weren't too burdensome on their technology, and we did pass that test. So, in summary, we have general standards that relate to location, antenna mounting specifics, and screening of ground equipment, and then, we have more specific standards that relate to the actual facility itself. And so, staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend approval to Town Council for this item and for these amendments tonight.
Nicole, can you just hit on the amendment real quick? What is in that?
Yes. So, those are the four sections that are being amended.
Yeah, but something that was added to our drop box, the addendum, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, wrong word, yeah.
So, the addendum, what was changed is just the, we worked on the redline versions to make it easier to see what the changes were. Previously, I just sent you the clean version. So, nothing substantial was changed, just the layout.
All right, thank you. The town is the applicant for this item, so if there is anyone here that would like to speak regarding item number 16Z-16-07, please complete a form, bring it up. Seeing none, I will bring it back up. Are there any questions or comments for Nicole? Thank you for coming back and completing the process with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and call for a motion. Nobody wants to see Nicole leave, so we're just going to sit here and...
I'll do a continue.
Yeah, we're just going to continue it. Anybody want to give a stab at it? It's, I know it's late. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Chairman, I recommend approval to the Town Council for case Z-17-100...
Z-16?
I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one here.
Let's try that again.
Try that again.
Yeah, that's all right. Remember to drop in the addendum as well.
Okay. Chairman, simple, I recommend approval to the Town Council of case number Z-16-07, wireless communication facilities with the associated addendum.
Thank you. Commissioner, motion's been made by Commissioner Bloomfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ayler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Well done. All right. I think that takes us to administrative items. Planning Commission minutes from the December 17th... Planning Commission minutes from the December 6, 2017 meeting, can I get an approval?
Motion to approve the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of December 6, 2017.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frolik, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I abstain, wasn't at the meeting. Mm-hmm. Wasn't at the meeting, which is why they've invited me to come back for tonight's meeting. Communications, a report from the chairman or members of the commission on current events. Happy New Year to everyone out there in the community. We'll move on to our report from our council liaison.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy New Year, like Chairman said. Thank you for all you do for the community. Here we go, hitting the ground running for another year in Gilbert. I just wanted to let you know that we were named the 22nd most caring city in America. And I know we throw these stats around pretty easily and pretty handily here in Gilbert. When you talk about the 22nd most caring, there are over 19,000 cities and towns in America. So when you think of it from that perspective, these are pretty good accolades that we're able to tout on a very regular basis. The next one's even better, because we're the fifth place, best place to find a job in America. And as much as I love Gilbert and love how we're the fifth best place, but out of the top five cities, four of them were in the state of Arizona. And I think that we should be pretty proud of that, because I think we're doing something right here in Arizona and it's very evident from stats like that. 2018 Gilbert Digital State of the Town will be held on Tuesday, January 23rd. Doors open at 5:00 PM with Mayor Daniels starting the event at 5:30. Will be held at Harkins Santan, as it is for the past several years, since it's in digital form. We would love to have you attend. The event is free, but we ask that you register, because space is limited to one theater, so we need to know who's attending. I've sent all of you an email with the registration link, so you'll be able to register quickly and easily if you'd like to attend. And then on Saturday, the 27th, will be part of the Regional Unity Walk. I've done this walk several times now. It starts at Tempe Beach Park this year at 4:30 PM with a festival and will include a one-mile walk over the Mill Avenue Bridge and we gather with members of the public from all of the cities in the East Valley. So if you'd like to join us for that, it's something fun to do and again, Happy New Year and thanks, and I'll see you next month.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to a report from our Planning Services Manager on current events, Linda.
Good evening Commissioners, Chair and Vice Chair. A great way to kick off the year, this agenda pretty much says it all, doesn't it? 160 acres to be annexed into the town of Gilbert to provide very high-end development. The homes by Mary Kay will range from 500,000, well over a million in this project. I've already looked at their product about a mile and a half down the street. A $500,000 home is going with $300, $300,000 worth of upgrades on an 8,000-square-foot lot. So Gilbert has attracted great development, along with a new hospital in our community, much desired, and also text amendments to keep up with technology and what the needs and wants of our community, all on tonight's agenda. So this is the type of work that you do and you lead in our community, so thank you very much for your input and the professionalism that you add to our community. Thank you very much.
Linda, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn.